Mr. Coleman, happy birthday to you.
It's nice to turn 40. All right, Vice President, that's the conclusion of our.
Thank you. So next up, we will have reports and discussion.
All right, this is Gates. I'll turn them over to Ms. Gallo. Ms. Gallo, first for us?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Ms. Gallo, is it this one?
Yes. Good evening. I'll begin with our update for the 2020-2021 school year. And we'll begin with enrollment. So as you can see, our enrollment is still up. We're in a pandemic, and students still are learning and coming to Sheldon I S D. So our current enrollment is 10,372 students. As far as attendance goes, you can see where we are compared to last year. Last year it marks 100% because of COVID, but right now we're at 92.97% for attendance. We're still holding above 9% for attendance during COVID. I wanted to share with you our current participation in the STAR assessment, which has been astounding, actually. Our principals have done an excellent job. Our teachers have been calling parents to get students, including those who are learning from home, to come to the campus to take the STAR assessment. So you can see, based on the number enrolled and the number of students who participated, we're really holding our own, and that data is going to be very important to us as we plan interventions this summer. We plan summer learning, and we hit the ground running with all, and we expect most of our students to return to face-to-face learning. As far as T E A updates go, we talked last time about whole harmless. Our principals are doing a fabulous job on their campuses with getting kids to come to school by offering different types of incentives. I know they can get cubby cards at Cravens for having so many days of attendance. We've got excellent programs on our campuses to get kids to come to school so that we don't lose any ADA funding. And at that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Gates to talk about the COVID updates.
Thank you, Ms. Gallo. All right, so I just wanted to start by revisiting the information regarding masks. As you all know, we've conducted our faculty meetings and our town hall meetings, and so this is something that continues to be, obviously, a hot topic. So we just wanted to revisit that and just remind everyone that Governor Abbott did repeal the state mandate for masks that went into effect on March the 10th. But as I shared with you before, we're kind of in the same place in regards to the latest information from the CDC. They are still recommending masks in public settings and events and gatherings where individuals are going to be around each other and interacting in a public setting. In addition to the recommendations from T E A, we also look at the guidelines from T E A, in addition to the CDC, rather. And T E A is also still making a recommendation that students 10 years and up wear masks inside schools and on school grounds. And so just as a reminder, where we're at in Sheldon, we're currently requiring masks for third grade and up. T E A does give us a little bit of flexibility in terms of developmental appropriateness. And so at the beginning of the year, we had a committee meeting. We looked at pre-K, Kinder, first and second, being a little bit difficult for them to keep that mask on. And so we went ahead and went with third grade and up, which aligns directly with that T E A guideline with 10 years and up. Also wanted to just update you on what the U I L is requiring, and they do still require students to wear masks. There are some exceptions that you can see there. They do obviously have when practical. And to kind of expand on what that means, obviously, when students are participating in something where they're going to be exercising or exerting themselves, that would require some sort of heavier breathing, they are not required to wear masks. But when they are entering or exiting an event or a competition, it is still required. And then schools have the wording of "may." Schools may require spectators to wear masks when attending U I L events. But a little bit of contradictory terms there because they want everyone wearing them as they enter and exit. And then once you are in your space that is socially distanced, that's where the school districts have a little bit of flexibility on having spectators that are seated at that point continue to wear masks. Do want to remind you, as we talked about before, that Texas Education Agency has allowed boards the flexibility to reduce the mask requirement that T E A has been in place, but that would require board action. And so at this time, as we shared in the town hall, we're still requiring masks of our employees and our students, but that is something that we'll continue to monitor. And if the board chooses to take a look at that, we would need to bring it back for board action.
Ms. Gates, I want to make a comment right there. So if the board will know, I don't think the cabinet administrated globally. So we talked through that some, so right now we just feel like if we so choose to exercise the board or changing that, perhaps we give our parents and students choice, that we at least finish the year as is and kind of give us a little more time to gather data, see how things are going and so on and so forth. But I'm sure, I know the board's seen some articles in a neighboring district or surrounding districts in relation, given their community and parents that have choice to choose to wear masks or students to wear masks. So we would at least ask the board to let's finish the school year as is. We want to be consistent, finish out. So if we're going to make a change, do it potentially in the summer and go on into next year.
Okay. The next slide is information regarding the latest on the vaccine. And as you probably saw in the news, again, vaccines are now available to all adults and children 16 years old and up in the state of Texas. And then also, the trials are underway currently for students in the age bracket between 12 and 15. And we are still hearing and actually working on a partnership with Harris County Public Health Department to help distribute vaccines through our facilities, our parking lots, like we've been doing before. And they're now expecting that the 12-year-old range will be available to take the vaccine if they so choose in May. And then children under 12, the timeline is still as is. We're expecting that to be about a year from now, so spring of 2022. Taking a look at our district statistics, just since the last time we visited, wanted to tell you where our cases. So after spring break and into the beginning of April, we had about 14 student cases and four staff cases. And then we were kind of expecting that after-spring break surge to hit, and you can see a slight increase there. We went to 20 student cases and 10 staff cases. But overall, when you look at our face-to-face percentages of students back on campus and our staff numbers, we're still at .2% and .3%, so still quite low when it comes to the number of cases.
What, Ms. Gates, what about as far as the students that are taking online virtual classes? Are those numbers, including those students as well?
It does not. Those cases are only active cases that are on campus. Now, if we have, in Ms. Gallo's slide, she reported on, for instance, participation in the STAR testing or the E O C testing. If we have a student who is technically an on-demand or a virtual student, but they come to campus for testing, and then we find out that they were active, an active COVID case while they were on campus, then we would report them and include them in that number. And this next slide is just a breakdown by campus so you can kind of see how things are spread out. As I mentioned before, you're going to see fluctuations in these numbers, anywhere from one student case. Our highest this past week was at Lake Elementary with six students. And many times when you see a cluster, I know before we had five cases, I believe it was at Sheldon Elementary, many times that's siblings. So you'll have one household where two or three kids will be impacted by COVID. And in both of these cases, that's exactly what that has been. And our students were contracting the virus from a parent who was known to have had COVID. The next slide is just an update on how we're doing with our testing so that you can see, we're still administering our binex COVID testings at our school clinics. Again, those are the tests, those rapid tests that our nurses are trained to administer. And you can see, from the week of March 22nd, about 19 tests given in district with three of those resulting in positive staff, one positive student. Fluctuates all the way up to a high the week of April the 5th with 39 different tests being administered across the district. And of those 39, only six ended up being positive. So the great majority of the tests that we administer, we do end up receiving a negative test result back on those. The next slide is just a reminder. This information was shared in the town hall, but just want to keep it on the forefront. Kind of what Dr. Davis just mentioned in terms of how we're going to end the year with our safety protocols and what our plan is at this point for next year. So as we mentioned before, keeping our mask mandate in place for the end of this year and then continuing to monitor guidance from the CDC and T E A and U I L in terms of a recommendation for how masks could maybe look a little bit different for the fall or even the spring of next school year. And then things as far as resuming face-to-face meetings. As I mentioned, we're allowing our campuses, our teachers and our principals to have some face-to-face P L Cs, and those are those professional learning communities. We just feel there's such value in having people have the opportunity to get in the same room together, still socially distanced, wearing their masks, and have those deep conversations about lessons and instruction. We are still not allowing outside visitors onto the campus. So for instance, if a parent wants to come and have lunch with their child in the cafeteria, we're still recommending that not happen just so we can really mitigate the spread of the virus and limit the number of exposures that we have at the campus until we get those vaccines more readily available to the community and to the students so we can move closer to that herd immunity. And then we're also monitoring field trip requests. That's something that's been very new lately. We had very little field trip requests coming in in the fall, and now that it's the springtime, we're starting to see those. And so our district COVID response team is really monitoring those on an individual basis. And so anytime we get a request from our campus principal through one of their organizations, we try to look at all of the factors that go into that field trip request. So is it absolutely necessary? Does it have the best interests of the kids at heart? What are the travel arrangements going to be? Where are they visiting? What are the COVID protocols of the place that they're requesting to go? So we are allowing, beginning to allow some field trips, but every case is kind of taken individually. And we're really looking to make sure that we can keep the kids as safe as possible, especially for the remainder of this year. I do expect we'll see more of a return to what we kind of feel is a little bit more normal field trip request process that will start probably in the fall. And then the next slide is just an update. The last time we spoke, we informed you about the learner location application process that we put in place that was also mentioned at the town hall meeting. And just want to let you know that application window has opened up, opened up on April the 12th. We're looking to run that through the 23rd. We do have online applications for parents that still feel that it's in their child's best interest to stay in a virtual setting. They can apply online. We also have paper applications available at each campus. And to date, so far, we've received 150 applications. And I can tell you, they're pretty evenly spread among our campuses. So we are looking at it each day. You might see seven or eight per campus, up towards 20 to 25, depending on the size of the campus. So the way that the communication will work with the learner location application, we have asked our teachers to go ahead and reach out to all of their parents. So for elementary, that's their homeroom teacher. For secondary, our principals are coordinating an effort where they have one class period they're responsible for calling. We just want to really make sure that parents have seen the communication. We've tried to send out the emails, send out text messages, have the town halls, broadcast the link on the website. But we're always fearful that there's a group in our population that maybe hasn't received the message. So we're asking teachers to go ahead and make those phone calls, starting with our on-demand students first, with the anticipation that those would be the parents that would likely be most interested in knowing about the virtual option for next year. And then they will transition to making contact with our onsite students just to make sure parents haven't changed their mind about what their plans are for next year. And then the principal will follow up with the parents that are still interested in submitting their learner location application and start to schedule those L P C meetings that we talked about before to review all of the individual student data. So it's going to be grades, it's going to be performance on assessments. They'll be looking at attendance, engagement even. We want to make sure that the parents are fully informed about what that process and that commitment to virtual instruction would look like for the next school year. And that is it for our reopening and really our plans for next year. Do you all have any questions from myself or Ms. Gallo? All right, thank you.
Thank you both for your reports this evening.
Transition to the next one? Okay. So it's that second facilities one?
That one right there?
This one? All right, so while Cruz is pulling up the next PowerPoint, this is just our monthly update regarding the latest when it comes to facilities and bond projects. And so just want to start by visiting the conversations we had before regarding long-range planning and just to revisit that. And again, we welcome any input and feedback you all have in terms of a time learn. So the first thing that we would like to revisit is just the need for us to look at conducting another demographic study. And we know that that information is going to help us start really planning for not just next year, but the next five years, possibly the next 10 years, as we did in the fall of 2019, looking at that 2020 bond that was called originally. And so the last, just as a reminder, the last demographic update that was done was in April of 2018. As I've mentioned before, we've had new developments, new apartment complexes, new subdivisions that have come into the community. We have also had the closing of a charter school that was a direct competition to us. And just being able to get that updated information about how all of those factors and COVID with the pandemic are affecting our enrollment. So as Ms. Gallo shared in that first presentation, we are very fortunate that we are still seeing increases in enrollment, but we do know that it has slowed a little this year compared to what our demographic studies in the past have projected. And so this is just an opportunity for us to get the most updated information. And we have a couple of options. Again, we could look at starting that in May. They would run about three to four months with a final presentation in August. That would really be beneficial if we are looking, as the board, if you're considering calling for a potential bond in November. Just as a reminder, there were some hesitations from the demographers there on conducting that demographic study right before school started just because there's often a lot of movement with students in August, right before school starts. And so the second option was looking at conducting that demographic study in September. That would run through November with final presentation to the board either in November or December, which would then help us be ready to talk about potential projects and needs for what could be a May 2020, 2022 bond. So those are some things to think about. And we, again, welcome any feedback or guidance that you may have so we can bring that back as an action item for you, hopefully at the next workshop, so we'll know which direction we'd like to move.
Also, I want to remind the board, just want to remind the board that also getting this time again with that, that was called a snapshot data from last Friday in October. So then in October, that'd give us some really good data as well as we place our enrollment. Coincide with the demographic study as well.
The next piece is just an update on our design phase. So even though we have not necessarily called for that bond, we agreed to move forward with the design phase of the work. You'll actually have an action item tonight on your agenda, and that is a proposal from Stantec Architecture for us to start the work for the Knoll Middle School Wing Expansion. And I just gave you a snapshot there, those Phase 1 immediate needs. Those are just the carryover projects from what we identified back in 2019 as the most pressing needs in terms of capacity issues. And so Stantec has presented a proposal for us to begin moving forward with that 21 classroom wing expansion at Knoll. And then the second phase that you should see coming, probably the next board meeting, will be a proposal from Huckabee as we move forward with the Cravens E C A Wing Expansion. So that's the direction that we're headed there, and that's why we have one action item in terms of Knoll Middle School because as you remember, that is definitely our most pressing capacity issue. We're waiting to see how the learner location applications will play out. And then if we're going to need to move forward with those temporary buildings, possible attendance zone changes, just kind of keeping that on the radar in terms of where we'll go from there. The next slide is an update on some of our existing 2016 bond projects. So the first one is regarding King High School complex. Very excited to see that we've made some progress with our Sea King Competition Gym wall. Just as a reminder, that is that wood wall that we experienced some warping on right in the competition gym. And so the initial phase of the work has been done. We met there today, and I was able to snap this picture so you could at least see the progress that's been made. The graphics are up, and we are at that punch list phase. There's a few little minor things that'll need to be addressed from the contractor, but it definitely is getting very close to being closed out. So that's the latest with the wood wall. And then also just want to update you on some other things that are in the works. That's regarding the K M S complex. So old Sea King High School where Crenshaw Stadium is, that's been on the radar. We know we have some parking lot work there. We're currently trying to get bids for that work and then also doing some security upgrades to Crenshaw Stadium to make sure that's a closed community access facility. And we have seen situations where members of the community are accessing that facility after hours when it technically is closed, and we've had a little bit of a security concern. So we've been needing to see what we can do to beef up security there, to add cameras, audible alarms, and then to secure those doors so that it's a little bit less accessible. The next item is an action item for you tonight, so I wanted to make sure and update you regarding the band tower. So there's information in your board packet. If you did not have a chance to look at that, I wanted to make sure and touch on that and give you a little bit of the history. So there's a picture of what we're proposing. And you may remember that we had a band tower item that was presented to you back in March of 2020, and that was previously approved by the board to move forward. And then I think it was probably two weeks later, we went on spring break, and COVID hit, and all business kind of came to a halt. And so COVID impacted the company that you had previously approved and their ability to complete production of this particular band tower that had been approved. And so what we've brought back to you this evening is the need for us to look at a different company that would provide the band tower. But we're also including the work that would have been done separately for the concrete pad and the electrical. So this is going to be inclusive of all of those three things. Originally, just the band tower had been approved, so the amount was slightly lower. But what you'll see here in the proposal for tonight includes all three. The tower, the concrete pad, and the necessary electrical. And that is everything in terms of the facility and bond update. Are there any questions regarding that information?
Yeah, on the band tower, I could see the need for electrical, but I think I recall seeing some about water as well.
I do not believe there is water, but I'm kind of looking toward. I don't.
We took it up because the cost was so expensive.
We took it up. We had to cut across the road, and we didn't want to tear up that driveway and all that company. It was really expensive.
We're getting a lot of water, isn't it?
A water cooler instead.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
So the tour has concluded. Is there anything on the council agenda? And a motion? Madam Vice President, if you would recommend to the board that the board adopt the council agenda items A and B with a copy to be attached and put upon the meeting. I'm getting motion by Ms. Archie. Second by Ms. Martinez. Any comments or questions? And all those in paper? Motion passed, she didn't respond. Next one, have new business? Consider refund to FEMA? Can we get a motion?
Madam Vice President, I recommend that the district refund the excess funds received from FEMA in the amount of $1,213,062.11 due from the fund balance for the copy to be attached to and become part of the minutes.
Motion by Mr. Coleman? Second by Ms. Archie? Comments or questions?
Yeah, so I'm assuming that this is based on payment from insurance company.
So Mr. George, come on.
I think I recall seeing something about maybe that full amount. Is it required to be refunded? I just want to make, I want to make sure that we're not paying back something that we may really thankfully get back again.
Yes, sir. I knew that there would be questions on that, of course. Unfortunately, after three and a half years, you're still dealing with FEMA. Actually, I have a couple of slides to present here as well. The FEMA process is that whenever we receive money from other sources like insurance or fraud coverage or whatever, they will subtract a portion of that insurance coverage from the project cost, and then they will reimburse the district from the FEMA funds. The idea or the call is that they don't make payment to a party claiming from FEMA funds to make profit themselves. In other words, you cannot double it. You cannot profit from a disaster. So that's what actually happened here. So they, on the slide, I can show you, they made a payment of $3.3 million. And we are still working on about four major projects that will, they owe us still $1.3 million. So that will add up to about $4.3 million. And if you get that whole $4.3 million, then we will be making a profit out of the insurance money that we received and the fraud coverage that we received. So they don't allow us to do that. So they are asking to reimburse about $1.2 million back to FEMA as they already paid. Once we make the payment, then they will work on closing out the rest of the projects. So at the end of the day, we'll be getting about $3.3 million from FEMA. And if you go to the second slide, I have a list of all the costs there. So we have commercial insurance of $50 million and the fraud coverage on Royalwood, $17,000. And the projected FEMA settlement is $3.3 million. And from some of the recapture adjustment and also from other grants, we received about $560,000. So total comes out to be about $19.8 million. So that was the total inflow from all the funding sources. So if you look at the outflow, '17, '18, $14.8 million. '18, '19, $3.8 million. '19, '20, $620,000. And we are still working on a couple more projects. So I'm projecting about $514,000 for 2021 year. So that adds to be adds up to about $19.8 million. So we kind of give it out. So we will, our outflow will be equal to our inflow as well. So that is the main point. They don't allow us to make a profit out of this. So actually, on the letter, it said we can kind of offset the amount in our whatever is receivable from FEMA, but I started getting emails from them, they want their money back.
So.
Before they issue.
Yeah.
So this is what I got from them, confusing to me. Bottom line is this. So they're going to cut us our final check, so to speak, or remaining projects until we reimburse, I guess, the overpayment. So at the end of the day, we're still going to net in the district. At the end of the day, $150,000 to $200,000.
One hundred thousand plus dollars.
Got you. So once we issue the paper to them, then they'll, we can go ahead and process the other projects we have. And once they issue that paper to us, we'll still be up $100,000 to $200,000, if that makes sense. So that's the bottom line. That's what I wanted to do.
If you remember, last year we put back about close to $9 million back into the fund balance and, you know, this money coming from, came from FEMA was part of it. So I'm asking to pull, I'm going to order the fund balance to make this payment. Any other questions?
All those in favor? As you mean this. Item B, consider review of investment policies of the district.
Madam President, I recommend that the investment policy set forth above and the investment options be approved with copy to be attached to and become part of the minutes.
Motion by Mr. Coleman? Second by Ms. Archie? Any comments or questions?
Is there any changes that's being made to what we've been currently doing?
Couple of changes related to personnel, you know, I have a secretary now, so she will be allowed to, you know, for money from the investments. And also there's the title change. Our accountant has become a business manager now. So those are the little changes I need to make.
Any more comments or questions? All those in favor? I don't pass you with it. Item C, consider, consider millennial project solutions for band tower project at CE King High School.
Madam Vice President, it is recommended that board trustees approve a millennial project solution for provided, the main tower and infrastructure for CE King High School at the cost not to exceed $147,500 as the best value to the district. Furthermore, it is recommended that the board trustees authorize the superintendent or designate the authority to negotiate and execute the contract at the cost not to exceed $147,500 with a copy to be attached and become a part of the meeting.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Archie, second by Mr. Coleman? Any comments or questions?
The millennial company, that's a different company than the original?
Any more comments or questions? All those in favor? And if that's, you know. Item D, consider Stantec Architecture Incorporated for the Newell Middle School expansion.
Madam Vice President, it is recommended that the board trustees appoint Stantec Architects as Architect of Choice to provide design services for the compensation of 7% of the cost of the work for the Newell Middle School expansion as the best value to the district. Furthermore, it is recommended that the board trustees authorize the superintendent or designate the authority to negotiate and execute the contracts at a price not to exceed the 7% for the cost of the work with a copy to be attached to and become a part of the meeting.
Motion by Ms. Martinez? Second. Ms. Archie, was I right? Second by Ms. Archie? Any comments or questions?
Is the 7% payment, is that customary for?
That's a great question. The 7%, of course, that's a great question, so.
Yes, sir, it is typically because we're doing an addition and it's more difficult with the existing lines. We're running about seven and a half to eight percent for any addition to this facility. New construction, we're running about six and a half percent. But because this is a remodel or addition, it's in line with industry standards.
Okay, I mean, I guess I'm just kind of thinking of, I'm not arguing that that's what's customary. It just kind of baffles me that. And I don't want to offend Stantec, so I'm just not what the question is. But I'm just trying to understand. So, I mean, if architects are going to get a certain percentage of what the cost is going to be, I mean, you know, I'm just thinking that's, I'm an architect. I mean, the higher I make design and make it more expensive, more money I'm going to get paid. So I don't understand why it's a percentage and not, you know, a set fee or, you know, how many hours it takes, this is what the payment would be, I kind of think. I don't understand why it's a percentage of the cost of.
I don't have to hear that stuff. If you want to come up to it, so.
We also have members from Stantec that are here as well that can answer any questions.
Set fee versus percentage.
All right. So the percentage, I'll say that's kind of a, a industry standard. It's just the way that it's been done. And in general, the more expensive a project is, you know, it's going to be linked to more level of effort, the drawings that have to be done and all of that. We have a set budget, which is going to keep us within a certain type of, I'm trying to translate this correctly. We have to be able to meet your scope on your budget. That's been set by somebody else. So we can't go design, you know, something out of line of what you would expect because we have to be held to what the budget is for that project, if that makes sense.
Sure.
And the 7%, I would say, comes into play because for new construction, you know, we're building off of site surveys and those kinds of information. When you add on to a building or renovate a building, there's a lot more effort that goes into verifying existing conditions, tying on to existing systems, you know, having to change those systems. So there's a lot more upfront work and continual work throughout the process. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Please don't take offense to.
Oh, not at all, not at all.
Because obviously, that's not what I meant at all. I was just kind of thinking, wondering, why is it a percentage versus, you know, this is where.
A flat fee, yeah. And I will say, there are projects, particularly for smaller projects, a lot of times we will work out a flat fee that has to do with level of effort. But when you get to these larger projects, it's just kind of been tested through the market that a certain percentage kind of gets you where you need to be.
I'm sure there are greater minds that have put all this in the concept together.
It's been, it's been a debate for a lot of years, you know, what is the best, most precise way to do it?
No, I don't think, I don't actually have that question.
Any more comments or questions? All those in favor? As you mentioned. Next one, have board information. First is A, tax collection report, March 2021. Item B, investment report, March 2021. C, Sheldon ISD expenditure and revenue report on general operating fund, child nutrition and debt service. D, quarterly major expense report. E, enrollment, April 2021. And F, monthly bond report. Any questions on those? Next, we will have any comments? And we have to go to close session?
Yes, ma'am. Very briefly, yes. Madam Vice President, if it's okay, if both of us cooperate, we'll still go on this.
Adjourned to close session through to Texas Government Code Section 551.072 to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. 551.074 for the purpose of considering the equipment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer, employee or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. And 551.076, consideration of employment specific occasions for or implementation of security personnel or devices. We adjourn to close session at 7:49 PM.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
We last seen him is when he swears to be a cop. He's true. We're like, it's all we hear at home. As long as she has her little entrance down.
Does she watch the...
Yes.
We will reconvene to open session at eight thirty-five PM. Okay, action on closed session items. Can we get a motion?
Madam Vice President, you has recommended that the board trustees approve the attached personnel recommendations, um, items A through F with a copy to be attached and become a part of the meeting.
Motion by Ms. Archie. Second, Ms. Martinez. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Attached units. And a fifteen policy. A FN AA local and FN AB local for approval.
Madam Vice President, recommend that show nasty board trustees adopt the attached FN AA local and FN AB local policies with copy to be attached to the departments.
Motion by Mr. Coleman, second by Ms. Archie. Any comments or questions? All of us in favor? Attached units. Number sixteen, other necessary business. A is the forty-fourth annual Chamber of Commerce Gala, Silman Beach Pavilion, LaCorte, Texas, April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one at six-thirty PM. B is May workshop, May fourth, twenty-twenty-one at six-thirty PM. C Tazby virtual spring workshop, May fifth, twenty-twenty-one from twelve-thirty PM to six PM. D, may, um, board meeting, May eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one at seven PM. E is C King class of twenty-twenty-one graduation, Panther Stadium, June eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. And F is Summer Leadership Institute, San Antonio, from June sixteenth through the nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Great, number seventeen, board suggestions, recommendations for future organizational information updates. Eighteen, suggestions for future agenda items.
Madam Vice President, I know Sandy, you said the board, I think some of you have not taken a proper response. Um, some of the other senior activities that's coming up, just make sure you, did you email them that?
I did.
Yeah. There's lots of dates, there's just lots of dates, I just wanted to make sure y'all got it and get on the calendar. Get on the calendar.
If there's no other comments or questions, we will adjourn to support meeting for Sheldon ISD at eight thirty eight PM.